Hey Jeff. Brad.
I was meeting of your North City Council order, April third, twenty twenty-three. Any please call.
Mr. Labudas, Mr. Lang, Mr. Marmy, Mr. Ra, Mr. Ryan, Mr. Barker, Ms. Foin, here, Mr. Harris, Ms. Hollinger, Mr. Hauser.
Here. We have seven here present this evening. Could you please stand for them, vacation and remain standing? Mr. Harris.
Father in heaven, Lord, we thank you for this beautiful day. You've allowed us to live. Thank you for bringing us here safely. Lord, we want to thank you for your son, Jesus, who went and died on the cross for us. We are going into this Easter weekend. Help us to remember it's all about Jesus. And we ask you, Lord, help us in our meeting tonight. Help us all to be respectful and listen to each other and learn from each other. We ask you all these things for brand his name.
Please remain standing. We have for the pledge of allegiance tonight. We have Shelby Abby Hopkins from Newark Digital Academy Middle School. Shelby, when you're ready, we'll get started. Next on the agenda this evening, we have caucus at the time council discussing pertaining to the agenda tonight. Do we have any? President Mark.
I'd like to excuse Mr. Ryan, Mr. Labudas, and Mr. Salinger.
Motion to excuse our three council members for a second. Second by Mr. Land. All the favors signify by saying aye. Same sign. That passes. Thank you. Also under caucus tonight, we have rule eleven, which is a rule we use to pass legislation that has not made it time for committees and has some kind of a special timing on it. We're gonna wait since we have a pretty good crowd tonight. We're gonna wait and do that under miscellaneous. I imagine most of your folks are not here to hear this rule of stuff. You're probably here to talk about something else, I imagine. So we're gonna move that to miscellaneous. Uh, next we have the minutes of our March twentieth, twenty twenty-three meeting. Do we have a motion to approve of? Motion by Mr. Harris, second by Mr. Barker. All the favors signify by saying aye. If I'm saying sign, that passes. We have no appointments this evening. We have two reports from standing committees, one from finance, one from service. Without objection, those will be received and filed. We have no reports from city officials tonight, and we have no communications tonight. Next on the agenda is comments from citizens. This is your time to be heard. This is not a debate or a question and answer period with council. This is your time to tell us what you're thinking about. I, I assume there's a lot of folks here would like to speak. If, if you'd like to speak, raise your hand. I'm gonna have a couple of you up, and then we're gonna kind of change your order. Is that certain?
Well, first of all, sir.
Welcome on up to the voting. Just give us your name and address for the record. Are there a lot of others of you'd like to speak? Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
I'm Lauren Berger, uh, fourteen-fourth Sunday, Newark. And, um, what I wanted to address this evening was uh, something that I was made aware of while visiting Cedar Hill Cemetery. Um, the, uh, I heard that there were some policy changes. And as I was visiting my grave, I had the opportunity to speak to Ms. Pat, Ms. Patznik. Um, regarding the rumors, things of that nature. I asked to clarify is true that live flowers will be available during the summer. He said that was the case. Um, I brought up concerns that I didn't think the, uh, community was adequately notified of, uh, a change that was gonna take place. That in my opinion hasn't been enforced in a hundred years. I can vouch for forty years. It hasn't been enforced. So as I was trying to, uh, discuss this, uh, I was met with nothing but that I'm that's the way it is. That's the way it's gonna be. Live flowers and nothing else. So I did advise Ms. Pat that I was taking exception to that. I asked her clearly if it was her that was changing this after all these years. That was, uh, given in the affirmative and, um, uh, I did let her know, you know, pardon me ma'am, I feel like they need this uh, to be brought to the attention of the community. So, uh, we had a discussion about whether people were duly notified. She kept, uh, pointing to the sign in front of the graveyard. There was proof of that and adequate proof. I think this weekend showed that wasn't the case. There are hundreds of people that didn't know about. Uh, there's more to come. Uh, there are people in other states that saw it on Facebook and had to call in and get their relatives to, um, respond to that. So I want to acknowledge, you know, the problem at Cedar Hill Cemetery. Um, I, I've been here daily for seven and a half years. Uh, I walk in there and I, I see the condition of it every day. Um, no one is denying that there's so much improvement that can be done. There, there's room for someone to make a mark to take their, their, uh, new position and have the community say, wow, that, that is really much better. I'm the first to admit there are graves who, you know, that are not attended. It might be a, a widow whose husband is there. Now she's in a nursing home. It starts to overgrow. Um, the liberties people have taken with various uh, decorations and things like that. Uh, logistically, I can see that it's a problem maintaining that cemetery. So I don't, um, I don't come just to complain. I, I offer solutions and I try to do that. I asked Ms. Patznik if, uh, letting her know, we're not trying to stop anything. We need a small concession, a small concession. And that has to do, and I'm not even concerned with the grave of my daughter. There's, there's children there that, you know, and you've heard this, um, a little Winnie the Pooh bear, a pinwheel. You know, something, you know, the city has a right to say this, only this much, you know, to keep people, whatever, piling things on there. But the other side of that coin is, uh, I had asked how familiar are you with the human grieving process? Um, my, my background, I, I coun- I counseled families, suicidal children. And I was forced with my degree to have to know what that is about. It's not a, it's not a inconsequential thing. Um, people grieve differently, and that's one point I want to make tonight. Um, they grieve differently. All city is, is providing with this new old policy is that, well, you have, you can plant a flower in the summertime. I said, that's no concession, ma'am. You know, there, there's mothers that go up there. And that child that lived two years, maybe the most important thing was that. That, stated on that. And it's not for the baby. It's for the mother going up there feeling there's some connection, something to say, honey, I love you, or whatever. But, um, the workers up there are exceptional. I've met all of them. I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Rhodes for, uh, giving us, he, he put a hold on this. We weren't asking for a hold on everything. It's just these trinkets. Uh, so that we could, uh, suggest some things. Um, so part of my solution to the maintenance problem with the cemetery, um, as I said, you know, we, we all know things that liberties have been taken. I started questioning, what's the difference between the front of a gravestone, the straight edge of the front of the gravestone, and if the city allowed people and, and I even hesitate to, to eight inches. We're asking for eight inches. It should be twelve, it should be eighteen, but eight inches in front of the gravestone with the condition that the new management can suggest that if you have something that's a loose, it has to be behind a border, no more than eight inches from the grave. It has to be rectangle. It can't go behind the grave. So it allows people this much space in the front. The flower is gonna be there anyway. I imagine flowers are eight inches, so the mower would have to go around it anyway. Ms. Patznik said, is one of her justifications today to me that, well, the mowers have to go straight. And I said, what's the difference between the mower going straight in front of those headstones? Uh, going around eight inches out from flowers or eight inches out from a reasonable border? Uh, there is no, there is no logistical difference. Um, the eight inches will not, you know, the concerns are you can't be get between these stones. You can't get between those stones. Um, thi- this remedies all that. But, uh, as Ms. Patznik insisted that that sign was adequate notice, and it resembled every other sign every year. It starts out discussing live versus, uh, fake flowers. In the middle of it says absolutely no artificial decoration. So, uh, of course, a flag, we're not talking about the, the vets section. These flags and these veterans are artificial decorations and are organic. I pointed that out, and she was, oh, no, no, those flags can be there. And I said, and you still think that this policy was clear to you? Um, there, there's a lot of vagueness in that sign, number one. So she said, oh, you just want to re- rewrite, uh, rewritten more specifically? I said, no, I think you're missing the point. We're asking for a little humanity, a little compassion. Um, because there are people here in real pain. And Sunday I witnessed people crying. Um, one family is here who had to strip their gravesite of their daughter. Um, and they brought their other child. They have no headstone. They just had something signifying her name and something personal to her, and her little sister would come there and greet her. There's nothing there now. There's a spotted dirt waiting to be filled in with grass. Now, that's the extreme of what this type of, what I call scorched earth policy. That's the extreme of what that causes. But there were many people crying. Um, there's a man here who saw a young woman trying to roll a statue across that lawn. And she was near tears because she couldn't do it. And, uh, as I pointed out to Ms. Patznik, these are the things you don't see. This is a misery that's been caused by this inflexible mandate decree. So as I went on trying to point out some of the contradictions, she said the flags are allowed. So I asked, what's the difference between that three-eighth inch uh, hole in the ground and a small shepherd's hook three-eighths inches? Um, other than with my suggestion, the shepherd hook has to be inside the border. Um, you're probably where there's two ladies that fill those bird feeders every day, and it's a beautiful place. There's birds everywhere. I spoke to them today. They, they said, we've come here for years. You, you walk through now, there's no luck here. You don't see luck. You don't see, you don't see the human condition walking through that grave here. So I wanted to make it clear, we're not here trying to, no huge roadblock, no huge asking you to change something. We're asking for eight inches. Um, and, and, and more than willing to say please um, require a board because, you know, these guys working and re-wacking. I also suggest that I spray around my grave. I did it in the spring. I thought, okay, I'll need to do this every couple of months. It left a two-inch white body dirt around it. No one's ever needed to go near, has ever needed to go near that. I, I did explore, how about since, you know, the first time they had to go out around re-wacking? If those are sprayed, a guy following them, that's gonna save all kinds of man hours. It's gonna take some of the tediousness out of it. Um, uh, so I just want you to know this, this justification, and I'll say this very directly. Anyone that says well, that policy's always been there is that's the most ludicrous response to this situation. Um, that's the response of a coward hiding behind. Um, basically, we found an error in Nellie's deed, and now we can take the farm from her and her grandpa. Snidely whiplash. That's what I equate this to. The fact that it was there the whole time means nothing. When I bought plots there, I never would have thought, can I leave a, a nightlight for my daughter? Because if you look around, these things were there. So, you know, it's almost either, either like deceiving people that have bought things there that all of a sudden you need to have a sterile environment, nothing but a flower. Um, Ms. Patznik's continuous reply, rote reply is well, they can do it after November. And I said, I'm here every day. I'm the only footsteps in here most of the winter time. This little girl isn't gonna come and put, try to find her sister's unmarked grave under the snow to leave, you know, my little pony or something. So it goes well beyond reasonable. It goes well beyond humane. This, this cemetery, after I can attest forty years myself walking in there, never been this way. The sun has always rose on that cemetery with mementos somewhere. I was told today, oh, no, it wasn't forced eight years ago. It certainly wasn't. It certainly wasn't, and I don't know why that, that comment was made to me. There hasn't been a day that you've walked in there in the last forty years that someone couldn't leave pinwheel. So I'm asking for some humane concession. The people who this cemetery is for, um, we, we, we pay to have that kept up. We pay the people who manage it. We pay the people. We, we elect the people that make these decisions for the people that manage it. Um, it's not going away. I don't have a whole lot of faith that anything is going to change with us coming tonight because I know how uh, the red tape rolls, but you started out this meeting, uh, summoning the Lord's name, and I don't think that this type of move where you're negating people's basic needs and we're asking for just allowing this to have a small part of them. That does not, I don't think fit in with the Lord's vision of you're gonna grieve the way this woman dictates. It's the only way you're gonna grieve. And you have nothing to say. Hey, my head. So I, uh, I rarely say this, but because of, um, my past experience, I was tasked with categorizing personality types, uh, for treatment and things of that nature. I wasn't gonna say this until my conversation today with, uh, Ms. Patznik, but she, she may have all the information on how to improve the performance and maintenance of a cemetery. And I don't make blanket statements, but I could, over the three conversations that I think I've had, I've detected no evidence of true empathy. I'm, I'm questioning whether she.
As president.
Yeah, I'm not sure that's.
Yeah, you're right. I'm sorry. Sorry. My observation was that there was no ability to, uh, address her um, compassion inside or get her to understand the misery that I saw this Sunday and, and, and we'll continue.
I think I have. I think I have your point. So is everyone here? Who's here? Is everyone here for the cemetery, basically? I mean, if you're here about that. Okay, thank you. I'm gonna have Superintendent Patznik and, uh, Director Rhodes come up and just kind of tell us what the policy is so we have it straight. If you will come on up. Yes.
Hi, everybody. I'm Chance Patznik. I'm superintendent of Cedar Hill Cemetery. And the policy that is in place and has been in place for over fifty years is that you are able to have artificial decoration from November first, March thirty-first. There's no limitation to what you can have as far as artificial decoration. And during the mowing season, when we're doing maintenance, we're mowing, we're doing weed eating, we need to get in and we need to be safe about things. You're allowed to have live flowers from April first to November first.
That basically is eight inches from the, uh.
You, eight inches in front, correct? And there's never been any orders that have been allowed in this.
Hang on. The, uh, eight inches from the gravestone goes towards front.
Correct. This is right in front of the stone. So on the side of the stones, we've got to be able to locate pins that we aren't able to locate if there's decoration or mulch or rocks or things like that on the side. And on the back of the stone, um, you actually don't own that, that land back there. That's that, that person behind it. Okay, so if you're going behind the headstone, that, that's not your space to go on. So you're restricted to those eight inches in front of the headstone.
But what may be new this year, Mr. Rhodes, correct me if I'm wrong, is we're, we're not going to allow stones or bricks or whatever to outline the grave.
That, right, we've put a new sign up. Could you stand up? To that extent, we have, we have some, uh, graves that are being outlined with stone and brick and coming way out to the bottom of the, of the gravesite. Um, that causes a problem with mowing. Uh, if it's stone, a stone that's thrown, it's carved, it's person makes it liable. Uh, it also causes a problem with getting, uh, all the backhoes through there if we need to dig a new grave. That's why we like, that's why the policy is eight inches in front.
What, what am I missing that that is different from what it's been the last forty years that these folks are upset about?
It's probably a little bit more of enforcement. Right, a little bit more of enforcement.
So we've let, that's been the rule, but it's not been enforced. Is that what you're saying?
The, um, the sign about the seasons have been put up every year. The sign about stones and, uh, ordering is new this year.
Okay. Is there anyone who would like to ask these two a question? We're, we're gonna kind of go off the cuff. Wait, I'll let you know who can ask a question. Brad, go ahead.
Okay. I'm a single mother. I can't afford a headstone too. So now I, me and my daughter have to come and look at a calendar because I couldn't leave so much of a light for my son.
You're able to leave something.
I have rocks on my son's grave, but I, I had them lined up perfectly with every other headstone in the row. What was that period? It's been there for over a year.
We've, we've got a headstone policy as well that you have to follow depending on what section you're sending, but you're able to leave something for him year round. You're able to leave live flowers during that mow.
But if there's no border, then what's stopping them from weeding, weeding over anything I put up there or mowing over everything?
We have got those policies in place so that we can create the most. I have, I have. For you to visit your loved ones. And if you keep up with your gravesite, I understand that, but not everybody does. You do have, have those black and white rules that are able to.
Why should we all be punished because one person doesn't do it? I have my mother, my father, my grandparents, I have three nephews. My sixteen-year-old son is there.
If you're able to have something there year round, memory or like to honor your loved ones, you're able to have the live flowers during the time we maintain the cemetery. We need to be safely. And you're also able to put artificial decorations there at your son's grave site, whether he has a headstone or not, to honor him.
Why does that have to be just artificial flowers? Why then? Why do I have to take my decorations off a flag with my son's pictures on it? That's the only way to identify that's my son. There was a flag with a flag pole with his picture.
You are able to have that out from November first to March third.
They're equal. No, 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 no. Say, we're not gonna let this get out ahead. I'll let you know. You better talk warm months. I'm sorry.
I said, people grieve during the warm months.
I, I understand.
Coming back and back. I'm sorry. I addressed everyone that's.
No, no, no.
Mr. Hodgkins, my solution solved all that. Thank you.
May I have you add a question?
Yeah, um, my problem is I understand there's rules and I, I'm always willing to work within the rules. But notification, they could send me flyers to buy flowers for them to plant, which obviously there's not enough time to plant flowers if they don't have enough time to mow. But my thing is why didn't they send a letter out to the people? Like, I get it because my parents are there, family. There, there was no notification. A lot of people don't go to the cemetery in the winter months. What's the, you know, walking through and all that stuff. So why wasn't a mail, a mailer sent out? Because they sent them for wreaths at Christmas. They sent them for flowers in the spring.
Well, in my mind, policy hasn't really changed. So I'm not sure why we were gonna send out a letter. Not a bad point, though. I mean, I, didn't you say that you were gonna wait? You were doing a thirty-day wait until?
We're, we're doing, on the things that are blowing around, we're gonna pick out. On, on the bigger things with the stones and the rocks, we're gonna put a, uh, a tag on the gravesite to ask them to come into the cemetery, uh, office so we can talk. We'll go over and get a plan together to work.
The draft.
Have there been things removed from the gray tape at this point?
They have been, I'm sure you all know about.
Hey, no, no. We're gonna have to keep this orderly. We're gonna clear the room. You can, you can decide. Go ahead.
There have been, I'm sure everybody knows about the windstorms that have gone through. We've had quite a few of them, and we have had to, we have had to pick things up that have either blown into the road, blown in the middle of the section. And I mean, there, there's been wreaths that have been completely blown away, things that have come out that are, that are in the ground, that are, that are anchored in the ground. And we've had to clean up honestly, a lot of things with the winds. We had a canopy that was blown off of a tent. And, and, and we have a lot of things to clean up. So yes, things have been, things have been taken. Um, not because we're enforcing this policy earlier than what's posted, but because we have to keep the cemetery up and kept. And when we have these windstorms come through, that's not always possible to do. People's decorations do get blown away.
Mr. Ra.
Just as a follow-up question. Everything that you've picked up has been stuff that's been blown away because of the storms. You haven't take, you haven't gone to a specific gravesite and taken anything off of a specific gravesite that was put there by a family member at this point.
I have not enforced the decoration policy thus far. Things that have been taken are, um, browning live wreaths that are, that are browning, things that have been blown away and things that have been damaged. But I have not, I have not enforced a policy yet. That policy went into effect April first. And, and we, we haven't, we haven't started yet. We were supposed to start today, and that's been held off so that everybody can have a, have a say in what, what they think the decoration policy could be so that they could speak their piece with everything like that. But I haven't enforced a decoration policy yet, no.
Ma'am.
Yeah, I just have a question. Important for mine, that's from the housing five minutes. Yeah, great. He's not in the vet inspection. Is that gonna be allowed?
Yes. The, the veteran markers that we, veteran markers that we have in the office, those were approved by the Veterans Association, just like they were approved in the veteran section that the veteran application actually makes the policy work. So those are approved.
And you're allowed to have that in your ramp?
Yes, absolutely.
And the other thing too about putting live flowers, they took all the water away. So there's no way to water flowers unless you bring it from home.
The, the water, the figures are working.
They're working now?
Yeah.
Because they weren't last year, so.
I, I'm not sure why that, but they're, they're working and they'll be able to live there.
What's your name and address, ma'am, for the markers? I'm sorry.
Stephanie Traeger, thirty-two Magnolia Avenue.
Who else has a question? Ma'am, what was your name and address? I'm sorry.
First, we'll have just seventy-four and one eighth.
We're gonna take a we're gonna take a couple more questions.
Okay, I just wanna make sure I'm thorough on this. You said eight inches away from the front of the stone, so I can I'm sixty-five and Cedar Hill Cemetery is like a playground. So when I was a kid and came out to fish and the pond, all that good happy stuff. But what I'm saying is my great-grandmother made me promise. So I can see that my great-grandfather had his pipe even after he was dead. So I always take out like a little pipe every couple of months. So I kind of put it down in the dirt right under his name and everything. Granted, it's not live flowers or anything, but it'll make it exciting. And, or pennies. I gotta put pennies on the stone, on my parents' stone and stuff like that. And that stuff that's gonna be taken away. My dad was arson investigator for the county here, and I always take up a little fire truck, not fire truck, but I'm not gonna stop doing that. I won't stop doing that. I always put it down in the dirt, like right in front of his stone. Those things could be taken away.
We could set that on the stone and so that there's nothing on the ground that, that isn't feeding with us having any.
Well, it's always in front of the stone and the dirt, like where I did normally plant flowers.
I have this in, I did just, yeah, within the eight inches, but we do have that, that policy, that's artificial, that's what you can throw. So my advice would be.
So even if I plant flowers there, I couldn't put it down in the. So even if I plant flowers there, I couldn't put it down in the.
You can put the flowers there of course, but not down in the flowers. So when we're weeding or we're mowing. If we're if we're weeding and we and we catch a catch a flower in there, that's not a safety concern. But if if there's. Trinkets in there, mementos in there, anything like that, glass, ceramic, anything like that, and that is causing the weeders or or in the mow, that's when that safety concern comes in and that's when it's dangerous.
That's where the border.
Hang on, hang on, hang on. Director, let me ask you this question, so if I didn't hear a lot of that answer. So you're talking about the eight inches that were planting flowers in front of the grave. You can't put anything else in there for flowers or you will put what? You will put something in that eight inch?
If you have a small car or something like that, if you have a small car or matchbox or pipe, something like that. If you want to set it on the base of the grave, that's not a problem. What she's speaking to is we come around there and we weed whack.
Right.
We clean up. That, if if somebody when they're weed whacking, if they get too far in, so that momentum is gone.
But what about in the eight inches where the flowers are? Cannot put something else in there in that with the flowers?
Not during the time when you're, when you are only supposed to have the 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 live flowers, no.
No, no, there is that there. Peace in that and see if she put a pipe in there or or not. Yeah, I'm not the way she's doing it. It's just a matter of the policy that's been here that. We're trying to make people more aware and you know, if you want to put that pipe on the base of it, that's great. Good reach to. Good reach to. We just don't want a weed whack, you know, your flowers.
Like you feel like the winter time.
Of course.
Of course. Okay, we're gonna do a couple more. Uh, the gentleman back there in a blue shirt and the lady here in the gray.
Yeah.
Um, name and address.
Can I show a picture or anything like that or something that I can do?
Yeah, very hard.
Okay. Rule, those are supposed to be the rules. My father died two years ago. He's a veteran. And so I have homemade random plots of there.
Not shut to the. Show that way, not. Is everybody here? So you're a little bit, you're a little bit past the edge.
I have just a little bit of a bed. I put flowers in every time I have my father. We're losing it, bro.
All right, here we go. We'd like to show you this picture.
I have my father's picture with flowers, you know, some mulch bed, that is it. I have his veterans memorial that's there. I maintain it and I I tell you the truth, I moved that plot and weeded it every two weeks, the last two years. Along with my grandparents' plots and everything else. It like the gentleman right here was saying. This is a spot where I go to mourn. This is where I go to talk to my dads. We're gonna talk to my god. This is something that my place where my mother goes every every week. There's a Mediterranean tradition that. You put a rock in the gravestone every time that you visit, a small pebble, just to signify that someone went there. On my grandparents' graves since the eighties. On my father's grave since two years ago, every person that's gone there, my family has placed one piece of gravel on there. And it's a sign of respect and it's a sign of showing reverence. And it's a sign that I can move past that my father has left this planet. If yesterday, my mother, because I was worried that they were gonna throw this stuff away because the policy on the website said this will be removed. Me, that means this is gonna be put in the trash. All these things for two years that I have done and have maintained, I had to tear out with my mother yesterday, or if she was grieving her husband. And. Make sure that this wasn't going in the trash on April first. I shouldn't have to do that. We bought these plots for our families to for their final resting place. I understand this is a policy that's happened a hundred years ago. Policies can change. We've proven that over the last hundred years as a society. Things can happen. All we need is just enough space where we can put a little bit of things, even if it's a small border such as that, in the first eight inches as provided. That's fine. I'll maintain mine. I'll keep my end of the bargain. As long as I'm living, I'll be going to that grave. I just want something that I can go to and visit and see my father every two weeks where my mother can grieve. And that's it.
Isn't that picture basically within the thing except the logo on both edges that you have to change?
Um, it's the, it's the border and the and the mulch. He has, he, you've got live plants and you've got a.
I got live plants and I do put uh artificial plants there during the the winter months.
So I understand you're within, you're within their.
So I can keep this border.
On the edge, no, you can't keep the.
The order is not.
So what is, if someone comes over with the lawnmower, what's them to stop going over everything that I've placed there? That that little piece of border is there to reflect, just like your yard. You have a border uh around certain things where your mulch beds are, so your grass doesn't go in and plant and seed.
You've got the border around the headstone.
Yes, I have a small border around the headstone. That's the problem. That also protects everything that's around that headstone, everything that's been placed there. If we, this is where the compromise is, if it's eight inches of that a flower can be. What's there to stop anything else from being there? That's eight inches. Give us eight inches.
Front.
In the front, sure.
Order, Mr. Allen, some order.
If we have a border, you can, you can weed around that. It's just like you're having a gravestone. There's a wall on the gravestone. You still have to put a weed eater next to it to cut it. At least that border is protecting those flowers that I put there or protecting anything else that I'm putting there. If you don't have that border and you just blow by with your mower, all you're doing is blowing everything and then they can throw it away because it's not in spot that they said it needed to be. If it's outside those borders. I guess that's, it's it's time to go. If it's in those borders, I think that's a very reasonable compromise.
All right, thank you. Ma'am, you have a question? We're gonna do a couple more questions and then we're gonna wrap this up and this. Hey, sir, hang on. What was your name and address?
Anthony Sully, one, two, three, North Eleventh Street.
Thank you. Ma'am, name and address and headstone.
Circle Bryant, three, 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 and three apartment B. I just want to know what happened at Angel Circle. I had stuff on my two month old dead daughter's grave for twelve years. I don't go up during the winter month because her birthday's in July, her death date is in September. My sixteen year old has no way of celebrating with her daughter, baby sister anymore. She has no way of celebrating with her baby brother. Because you guys aren't allowing us to leave the gift that we would put up there, sure. ABC Six came down eight years ago when this all came up about. They were told specifically, if we had a border. Nothing would be touched within a border. Nothing. Now my grandson carousel, that still works by the way, after twelve years being up there since before her headstone was even placed, is gone. There's infants in that circle that these parents don't get to celebrate holidays. They don't get to celebrate birthdays. And all their stuff is gone right now. We didn't get no warning to come and get our stuff.
I can tell you, I I don't believe these.
My wife, many of them times going up there. I can't even tell you how many mothers go out there to greet their babies and get some sort of cheese with their babies. And now we have a, you know, lifeless little circle. It's lifeless up there now.
These folks have not removed anything at this point.
Pictures of the removal.
You've got pictures of them. Hang on, stop. You have pictures of cemetery people up there removing yourself?
I got my daughter's grave before and after.
That that's not my question.
But they removed everything.
I cannot believe Mr. Rhodes would have the people remove the thing and just stand right here. Would you, would you like to just? Well, one, it could be the wind, maybe the wind, which we just had last Saturday. You're done, we're done, we're done. I've just told you, the cemetery people have not removed it. I don't know where. If you would shut up and let me talk, we might be all right. The cemetery people have not removed your stuff.
Well, they're where they. That's all.
I don't know, I may don't. Does anybody else have a question? If you have a question, raise your hand. We're gonna do a couple more and then we're gonna clear the room. Ma'am in the green.
Where's the answer? Yes, you mentioned um the flag needed to be in the the folder. If if a American flag not in a folder, well, if you're, I'm not removing any of yours. Live, it's just that the VA approves those certain folders for them to go in. Okay, and also, um, so. It it's not, I I don't know for everybody, but for me, it's not just, I'm there once will be, um, I have, you know, it's there. Um, it is not just for me to grieve, it's for his team of friends to come and grieve. So uh sometimes. They visit, sometimes they come and eat lunch with them. Sometimes they bring a pinwheel or something. It's always fun to see what they left behind. Um. So and and they're always up against his, so like we're not, I mean, there's nothing crazy. I I just needed to make the point that it's not always just for us. Um. Sometimes it's other people, um. Like children that um are leaving things that need to grieve in their own way. Um, also, what what is the next step? What will um happen um after this discussion? Sorry, I need that for your.
Policy is, is, it it will still be enforced. Um, I I truly, my job as superintendent is to provide everybody and their loved ones with the most respectable, well-encouraged cemetery that I can provide them with. And enforcing the policy is the way to do this. I I know that you you disagree as far as what a respectable grave type looks like, but I have to please a lot of people and I I know. I I understand where you all are coming from and I appreciate you coming here and speaking things.
Okay, hey, hey. Nope, nope, nope. It is, okay, well, hey, you don't have to say.
That's not respectable, but I do.
Let me, let me just ask Mr. Rhodes this. Is there any chance that you could, you guys could talk about in that eight inches? Allowing other things besides live flowers along the to the eight inches?
That's why we're here tonight to talk about things. That's why this morning we didn't remove anything from there. We're we're gathering information. The policy still places, Jen said, we're gonna discuss some things every next couple of days to see what. If if there's middle ground or there's not a middle ground. The other thing that we're really struggling with is. The people that are taking more than the eight inches. We've got people taking entire grave things and putting rocks in there. I can't run motors over that and I can't run backhoes over that. Those people are gonna get notices on the graves. We just want to talk with them. And let let them know that, hey, wait a minute, this is kind of disrupting day to day business. Can we draw it back?
We do the compromise of eight inches and even just a small border to protect the flowers because. You know, they're just whipping through there and they cut down the flowers and it's like, oh, well, that's the policy.
Yeah, you know, the easy.
That's what I'm saying.
The easy thing for me to say is yes, let's do that. That's the easy thing. I'd rather talk with the workers who are up there trimming or running stuff, what problems do they have? And so the border is gonna be that big a problem. There's thirty-seven thousand headstones up there. And we hear from people. Complaining about people leaving things on the graves. We hear from people complaining about flowers stopping on the graves. There's a whole another side. But people that the the take out, we want to get that. And and we're trying to, trying to do that. The question, what is the definition of that? What what is that definition? So let's let's argue, some of the workers, what's making your input there? We're not ignoring you.
Where do you want to go from here, Mr. Rhodes?
Give me a week, give give me a week, we'll reach out.
Thanks. And then how are we gonna let these folks?
The gentleman up here is the one who sent to Facebook, first average, is that correct?
I I asked for it. I spoke with him, I'll reach out. Now, I mean, how are we gonna let everybody else know what what you've come up with?
Can I just say one word like bang?
I can I can get a pad of paper and I'll write their name and email. Now, we're happy to communicate that way too.
There's there's thirty thousand headstones that he said. That don't. But I guess, I understand they're small, and there are a percentage of people out there, and I've been there, I've seen some of the things where they do take up the whole percent of their gravesite. I get that. And those small people, those, there's small percentage of those people can be identified and called if your family comes over a certain amount. Or time, let's say thirty days or something, I don't know, whatever you decide.
That's kind of what we have in our mind.
That's why, that's what we spoke about. But I think that's a small percentage. Cause I've walked around there. I've been going running there. There's other things that, you know, that are out there. It's just, you know, compromised. But but there is a way, we have, you guys have a Facebook or something or or something on your website where you can notify it, like everybody has a hole. There are people out of town too that can't make it here. There are people that. The internet or a phone is the only way to get a hold of them.
How about, how about when? We'll go thirty days and then you, we will put something on the city's. Facebook, the city's page, can we do that as, just say, hey, website, something, we'll put it on the front of the website about Cedar Cemetery. Rules and regulations or however you want to do that. Would that work?
Thirty days.
Would that work? Would that give you enough time to think about it and talk about it? Get get some other input? Okay.
Could I?
Mr. President. Yes, Mr. Martin. I'm sorry. Do you have one more? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
One more final.
My hearing is shot, so.
I I I want to apologize because my my intentions were never, never to hurt anybody or to single anybody out. Um, I I I hear you and I appreciate you all coming here face to face to discuss things. Um, my job as superintendent is to provide the people with the most respectable, well-encouraged cemetery that I possibly can. And the decoration policy that was created and put into effect over fifty years ago, that has not been enforced in recent years. It's caused major issues, major safety concerns and major maintenance concerns in the cemetery. So in order to maintain the cemetery in the most respectable and safe way possible, I do need to enforce the decoration policy. The decoration policy is not a scorched earth policy like it's been. Written all over Facebook about. You are able to have something year round for your loved ones. During during the time that we're actively maintaining graves or weeding or mowing, you are able to have those live flowers there to to remember your loved ones. During the times that we're not actively maintaining the graves, from November first to March thirty first, you are able to have those artificial decorations there to remember your loved ones. As far as the narrative that I am heartless and I do not care about anybody, that couldn't be further from the truth. I I. In the few months that I have been superintendent, we have made countless improvements to the cemetery. We have planted trees, we have trimmed trees, we have ripped out dead bushes, we have planted new plants. We've improved graves, we've done grave restoration to to the to the. Historic, the the Baker Moncrief, the the Miller baby grave that is up on on in the old section that don't have families visit him. We've improved those. And we've made it a respectful place for people to visit. And for the people that are buried there that aren't here with us anymore. I care a lot about the cemetery, which is why I am here to enforce those rules. So that I can provide you with the most respectful cemetery that I possibly can. I care and my crew cares. I have the most amazing crew of guys that you could ever imagine. They care about what they do. They take pride in their work. And they are there every day working hard to provide you with the most. Like I said, respectable cemetery that they possibly can. And they deeply care about the people that are buried there, just like I do. So unfortunately. You know, without the policy being enforced in the past, we've gotten so far out of the realm of what is an acceptable. Cemetery and acceptable decoration policy. That's the only compromise is to actually enforce the policy that is in place. I appreciate everybody here coming out tonight and voice their opinion face to face. I really do. I know that we probably won't reach a one hundred percent agreement, but I do appreciate everybody coming out.
We'll have some compromise in the next three days.
Yeah, we're, again, we said we're gonna review the policy. It lives on, so there are thirty days.
Yeah, so does that mean that it's on pause for now until those thirty days are up?
Yeah, we're a pause, just to catch the president's ass.
Ma'am, you have something new you want to add to this one?
Yes. We're now at for tonight about five o'clock and there was a woman there. She was beside her son. Right, and now I'm going to go. Her first grandbaby is buried in that circle. She had something glued on the headstone. Somebody ripped it off along with all of our decorations. We had angels on my pretty daughter's grave. We had a carousel. We had live plants. We had everything. They're all gone. And I know she said about the windstorm, but I took pictures of graves that still have stuff on their graves. That should have blown away in this this windstorm, but didn't. And I just wanted to make that known.
You have something to add?
Yes, sir. Uh, is this a, I have two questions. Is this a financial decision? Did you say?
No.
No. So are you saying, because you're saying it's about safety, right? There's a safety issue.
Uh, we're getting out of the rocks. Yeah, we have motors around the rocks being there throwing away, yes, that's definitely true. We get into somebody. Putting a rock barrier all the way around the uh grave and then putting rocks on top of it. Different things. Yes, how do you say? Figure piece of equipment through there. That's why we have eight inches.
So my solution would be either bid it out, find a landscape company. There's many in New York that would love to have this contract. That is probably save the city tons and tons of money because if you're doing this in house and you're paying retirement, you're paying all this payroll to city employees. You're you could get it done much cheaper. The city of Granville does it. Lots of cities bid out, even cemetery work. And if if the person in charge maintenance of the cemetery is not getting their job done, it's time to hire somebody that'll get it done. They can mow around these things. It's not a safety issue. Or to pretend to not hear you going to ten service. I have no issue.
Okay, we're going to go. We're going to go one more, two more, and then we'll let stuff. You have a question? You have a quick comment or?
I have taken my mower over and mowed the whole walk and it's huge. Some of the graves go back to the eighteen hundreds and I have had to go push mowing because it was so overgrown.
I think that's what we're trying to solve. We're trying to get the cemetery. We're trying because we get we got a lot of complaints during the summer, especially July and that where the the grasses are growing soft trim, but that's that's some of the problem that they're working on.
Uh, a few comments. One is that the empathy, what Mr. Lauren was talking about is actually relevant because in Chance's review, the ability to be there for families in their time of need and be there for families when with concern or comment is for both her and also enjoy bringing their being there for families in their time of need. Um, she's under a six month probation period right now, and so I would ask that you all take this very seriously because she's taking a lot of heat probably for something that isn't necessarily all about her. Um, David is her boss and I do believe, uh, Mayor, you are David's boss, so I would speak to the two of you and caution you that just last year in twenty twenty two, there was a Supreme Court ruling um, and awarded a man seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for emotional distress of what is happening right here, right now. You all have an obligation, you two have an obligation to this, to these people, to these citizens right here. Or there will be a lawsuit that will come and it will be won because of this Supreme Court, a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar emotional distress. I'd be happy to give it to you, ma'am, and you can take a look at that. This is serious.
Okay, is that your is that your is that your one suggestion?
Right here are also elected in. They are elected. She is not. Chance is not elected. Okay, these people are elected. It is very important for you to use your voice and sir, I think it's very rude of you to tell someone to shut up.
So I do apologize. I shouldn't have said that. Okay, whatever. I'm sorry. And I I I have nothing, no question, no way that I just want to say a sentence. One sentence. I apologize for my demeanor today. I'm not normally that way. I'm emotionally invested in it and I never say anything, but my daughter was murdered and I and I had to fight a year with Knox County to get her justice. I never saw the day would come that I would have to fight for her to have a nightlight on her grave. And these are the things that people go put into these respectors. There's no difference between if we don't have a flag and we have a bin. You're the exact same logistical situation. I think that's what Mr. Rhodes. Okay, you know, I grew up on Garfield. I have my grandparents there and my parents are there. I understand Cedar Cemetery. Okay. If you have nothing else about cemetery, you can go now. And then look, in thirty days, Mr. Rhodes, we have something on the city's webpage about rules and regulations. There was no. Yeah, we'll take five minutes break. If I need water. I'll be happy to get one.
Anyway, thank you for apologizing.
And we're going to get back to the meeting. I'd like you to come back to. We're going to continue. Stand right there. You can go. Thank you for joining us. I'm waiting on the front runner to get done. We're going to continue with citizens' comments. Anyone else like to speak? Yes. Your name and address for the.
Don't want to speak too loud, but not too low. So my name is Kent Blaney and I live at one four zero seven Mystic Glen Drive in Newark. I was born and raised in Newark and still live in. I'm going to talk about my properties on Rice Street, whatever it's worth. We own the whole street, both sides. Four blocks out. And at some point, I think we're going to discuss developers. We believe there's some important ways to possibly build yards. That's why we can talk to the mayor at one time to see if we can partner on that at one time. So at this point, we're ready to move on in life. And that's our goal there. Right now, we're in the process of tearing down one house and it seems to be having some situations that are uncomfortable with me in the sense that what do I have? Three minutes? I did Toastmaster. How come?
Yeah, you are. Go ahead.
Okay, so the real thing I was going to say and start this off is there are three ways to get someone to do something. One is to offer to to punish them somehow. I can substitute teaching. We give detention and school suspension. And but there's a second way. We reward good behavior with elementary schools, communities and middle schools by giving them candy. Okay, that's the second way. There's a third way that we're all familiar with. If you're watching the final four, watching the girls' basketball team, it's called teamwork. You're going to accomplish more by developing a team and and work together and pull on the same side. So I would hope that the city of Newark would help me and to sell off those properties for the purpose of development. There's three acres there. Again, we own the entire street on both sides. So I'm having difficulty with property maintenance right now. They don't realize that we're under prevent. And they hopefully do after today and the idea that they're going to start punishing me if I don't get it in dumpsters within a couple of days. Uh, Tim is working with me, but I would honestly say that we have enough evidence that they do not want to tell the truth sometimes on what's going on. And we've been keeping track of what's going on. So work with me or I'll finish with this line. We've had a lot of attorneys that are discussing this. There's a fourth way and it'll be litigated in court, which I do not want to do and I don't think you want us to litigate. So work with us somehow and we'll sell the property and and see that it's developed. I think that's what I've been attempting to say for years and I came down here just to say that. So wish me luck and don't punish me if I'm trying to sell it off or develop. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else under this section of citizens' comments, ma'am?
Hey, Ryan. April is the the beginning of. They have an address. Oh, sorry. It's for child bullying now. The thirty seven violent. We've just started uh, child abuse prevention. And I found I've been seeing some interesting articles. Um, and one particularly caught my attention in the New York Times, um, from the editorial board, some board entitled, The Dangerous Race to Put Children to Work. And Ohio was part of this, unfortunately. It it starts out that in February, the Department of Labor announced that it discovered a hundred two teenagers working in absolute conditions for company that cleans reimpacting equipment in factories around the country of violation of federal standards. The minors aged thirteen to seventeen were working with dangerous chemicals and cleaning brisket sauce and head splitters. Three of them suffered injuries, including marital closet threats. Ten of these children worked in Arkansas. Um, including six that are a factory owned by the state's second largest private employer, Tyson Foods. And rather than taking immediate action to tighten standards and prevent further exploitation of children, Arkansas went the opposite direction. Earlier this month, Governor Sarah Huckabee Sanders, Republican, signed legislation that would actually make it easier for companies for the children to work. The bill eliminated a requirement that children under sixteen get a state work permit before they're employed. The precedent required them to verify their age and get their permission. Hearing a report party, evident investment. Arkansas is at the vanguard of the conservative and I will get to know Ohio's part as well.
Is there a purpose for council by or is this a state?
Yes, because we hide uh, including children. And it does affect Ohio's possible tax legislation recently regarding to this. So anyway.
All right, I asked you a question. Is this pertaining to council and what we are dealing with the business or is this a state issue that should be addressed at the state level?
I feel that it is supposed to be and.
You feel like it's a city issue?
And to the yes.
Legislation.
All right, well, I go for a little bit.
Okay, so anyway, Arkansas is at the vanguard of a conservative effort by business lobbyists and and Republican, and I think this is really important news. Business lobbyists and and Republican legislators to roll back federal and state regulations that have been placed for decades to protect children from abuse. Echoing that philosophy, bills are moving through at least nine other state legislators, none includes ours. Um, that would expand work hours for children, lift restrictions on hazardous occupations, allow them to work in locations that serve alcohol or lower the state minimum wage for minors. Um, this labor department says during the sixty nine percent increase since of two thousand eleven in the illegal employment of children. The response of these states is not to protect those children from exploitation, but instead to make it legal. Voters in these states may support deregulation, but they may not know the businesses can use these bills to work children harder, cut their wages and put them in danger. There is time for them to persuade lawmakers to say no to these abuses. This is Ms. Sanders, formerly the press secretary for Donald, President Donald Trump, made it clear in an appearance in our oral address in January that disdain for the protective role of government that is driving this effort. As long as I am your governor, the meddling hand or big government creeping down from Washington DC will be stopped cold and Mississippi River, she said. We will get the overregulating, micromanaging, bureaucratic tyrants, author backs, out of your world, out of your lives. Lawmakers in these states have been vigorously lobbied by industry groups like the flexibility of of teenage employers. Say that more children are needed in the workplace to make up for labor shortages. One of the principal lobbying organizations pushing those bills in several states, again, including Ohio, is the National Federation of Independent Business, the conservative. is the National Federation of Independent Business, a conservative group that supports Republican candidates and has long opposed many forms of um, regulations such as the Affordable Care Act. There's this issue news releases praising lawmakers for passing bills that let businesses hire more minors for longer hours and taking credit for supporting these efforts. Um. The Arkansas government of Governor's spokesperson said in a statement that the work requirement requirement was an arbitrary burden on parents. But opponents noted that many child workers don't have parents or guardians to look after their interests. In the cleaning company company case, um, several of the child workers were unaccompanied minors who recently came over the southern border, according to the lawyers. Soon they won't even have the state to approve their employment or working conditions. The real target of these rollbacks, it's not after school jobs at the corner hardware store. They have a much bigger effect on labor force that includes many unaccompanied migrant workers who work long hours to make um, or package products sold by big companies like General Mills, J. Crew, Target, Whole Foods, Pepsi Company. As a recent New York Times investigation documented, children are being um, widely employed uh, employed across the country in exhausting and often dangerous jobs for working for some of the biggest names in American retailing and manufacturing. Several of these companies later told the Times that they would investigate any illegal practices and try to end them. Hundreds of children described in the Times report were working in violation of federal labor standards, which barred child workers from a long list of hazardous jobs and forbid children under sixteen from working more than three hours a day or after seven PM on school days unless they work on a farm.
Do we have a wrap up on this?
Um, would you like me to get to a hype and um, there's a lot about sanitation services and things like that. Blacks doing one of the private um, private equity things, but let me get to Ohio's part.
Mr. President, can we get to the council part?
Yeah.
The part of New York City Council.
The Ohio Senate with passed the bill earlier this month extending more of.
Mr. President, I agree. This Arkansas partisan politics lecture and and federal politics lecture and and then moving on to this Ohio, even though we happen to live in the state of Ohio. And we're talking about federal and state laws pertaining to child labor laws is pretty much irrelevant to the city of Newark.
Does this happen?
Yes, absolutely. We are not going to pass legislation that is going to supersede state legislation on on child labor laws.
We can still have a role in um.
Give me a couple, give me a couple sentence wrap up.
Thank you. So anyway, um, the Koch brothers have been supporting many national efforts to regulate business. Um, in terms of Ohio, um, we're including things like working in undressed for your freezer, meat coolers, working with dangerous chemicals. Um, in Ohio, there'll be regulating hours during school days, for instance. Um, the Labor Department said it would and that and would in testify its investigations of the visited violations. Um. Okay. The administration also said it would be more to coordinate the protection of children, particularly those who migrate across the border unaccompanied by a parent and then receive little supervision once they leave immigration shelters.
Give me, give me, give me a wrap up. Give me one or two sentences and then we're gonna have to move on.
Okay. I think you can agree that this is a good issue. Um.
I don't disagree with that, but I'm not sure how.
We we have sex um, exploitation of of teenagers in our study. We have um, I I know when my son was working at at a fast food place, they did things like locking up um, safety equipment, um, like um, bandages and things like that. Dean regulating um laws on um, safety for children. It, I I think it's extremely irresponsible, especially in a time where this is the moment that we are um um, emphasizing um. Saving kids from abuse, whether it be from parents or whether it be from companies. And there's a lot of companies doing a lot of exploitation. I think that is a city responsibility. I don't, thank you. I really do appreciate your time. This is crucial.
Or some first reading twenty three dash seven.
Order number twenty three dash zero seven by Mr. Rath, Mr. Parker, Mr. Marmy. In order to change the zoning classification of certain real property generally described as eight eighty one Avenue, City of Newark, Lincoln County, Ohio. Parcel tax ID number zero five four dash two three six five zero zero dash zero zero dot zero zero zero. From now, single family residence RH high density district to MFR multi-family residence district zoning code in City of Newark, Ohio.
Twenty three dash seven will be referred, we refer to the planning commission should be back here around July third and twenty three dash oh eight.
Order number twenty three dash zero eight by Mr. Rath, Mr. Parker, Mr. Marmy. In order to change the zoning classification of certain real property generally described as two eighty one Amlet Avenue, City of Newark, Lincoln County, Ohio, parcel tax ID number zero five four dash two seven eight eight five zero dash zero zero dot zero zero zero. From that, a single family residence RH high density district, PFR two family residence district zoning code of the City of Newark, Ohio.
And twenty three dash oh eight will also be the third time, and should be back about that same meeting. Next, we got a resolution on a second reading, twenty three dash twenty two.
Resolution number twenty three dash twenty two by Mr. Rath, Mr. Parker, Mr. Marmy, Mr. The Buddhist and Miss Blind. A resolution authorizing directing the director of public service of the City of Newark, Ohio to advertise for bids and enter into contract for the off-site vessel and beneficial reuse of biosolids from Newark's wastewater treatment plant.
Twenty three dash twenty two is on a second reading. What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Rath.
Make a motion to adopt twenty three dash twenty two.
Motion adopted by Mr. Rath, second by Mr. Parker during discussion on twenty three dash twenty two. See, now, Janine, please call a roll vote.
Mr. The Buddhist, Mr. Lang.
Yes.
Mr. Marmy.
Yes.
Mr. Rath.
Yes.
Mr. Klein, Mr. Parker.
Yes.
Miss Blind.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Hattiger, Mr. Hauser.
Yes.
Twenty three dash twenty two passes seven zero. Next on the second reading, we have twenty three dash twenty three.
Resolution number twenty three dash twenty three by Mr. Marmy, Mr. The Buddhist, Mr. Parker, Mr. Mr. Rath and Miss Blind. A resolution appropriating monies of current expenses of for current expenses of municipal corporation.
Third second reading of twenty three dash twenty three. What is your wish?
Mr. President, I'm making motion to adopt resolution twenty three dash twenty three.
Second by Mr. Marmy, second by Mr. Howser. During discussion on twenty three dash twenty three. See, now, Janine, please call a roll vote.
Mr. The Buddhist, Mr. Lang.
Yes.
Mr. Marmy.
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Hattiger, Mr. Hauser.
Yes.
Twenty three dash twenty three passes seven zero. And finally, on the second reading, we have twenty three dash twenty five.
Resolution number twenty three dash twenty five by Mr. Rath, Mr. Parker, Mr. Marmy, Mr. The Buddhist and Miss Blind. A resolution authorizing and directing the director of public service of the City of Newark, Ohio to advertise for bids and enter into contracts subject to the appropriation of funds for replacement of lead service lines within the water distribution system for project years twenty twenty three to twenty twenty seven.
You heard the second reading of twenty three dash twenty five. What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Rath.
Make a motion to adopt twenty three dash twenty five.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rath, second by Miss Blind. During discussion on twenty three dash twenty five. See, now, Janine, please call a roll vote.
Mr. The Buddhist, Mr. Lang.
Yes.
Mr. Marmy.
Yes.
Mr. Rath.
Yes.
Mr. Klein, Mr. Parker.
Yes.
Miss Blind.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Hattiger, Mr. Hauser.
Yes, twenty three dash twenty five passes seven zero. Then we move on to resolutions on the first reading, twenty three dash twenty seven.
Resolution number twenty three dash twenty seven by Mr. Marmy, Mr. Parker, Miss Blind, Mr. Rath. A resolution appropriating monies for current expenses of municipal corporation.
Twenty three dash twenty seven will be held our next meeting on April seventeenth. Next, we have twenty three dash twenty eight.
Resolution number twenty three dash twenty eight by Mr. Rath, Miss Blind, Mr. Marmy and Mr. Parker. The project consists of replacing two deficient structures, bridge number LIC, Mount dash zero three four three three, SFN four five six zero four one eight on Mount Street. PR eight one eight one three over lock con run and bridge number LIC, J E F R D dash three oh one five zero, SFN four five six zero four two six on Jefferson Road, MR four ninety one over lock con run, including construction of sidewalk line within the City of Newark.
And the car emergency.
And the car emergency.
Twenty three dash twenty is on for a reading. It's emergency. What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Rath.
Like to make a motion to adopt twenty three dash twenty eight.
Motion adopted by Mr. Rath, second by Mr. Parker. Is there a discussion on twenty three dash twenty eight?
Mr. President.
Mr. Rath.
We're declaring emergency on this legislation for two reasons. One, because bridges just happen to be near and dear to my heart. The other is, uh, we're trying to meet ODOT's demands for their deadlines.
Thank you, Mr. Rath. During other discussion on twenty three dash twenty eight. It is emergency. It's gonna take seven votes. If this all roll vote.
Mr. The Buddhist, Mr. Lang.
Yes.
Mr. Marmy.
Yes.
Mr. Rath.
Yes.
Mr. Klein, Mr. Parker.
Yes.
Miss Blind.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Hattiger, Mr. Hauser.
Yes.
Twenty three dash twenty eight passes seven zero. Next, we move on to twenty three dash twenty nine.
Russell.
Hey, you wanna move?
Sorry.
Sir, Brian.
Resolution our twenty three dash twenty nine expedite by Mr. Marmy, Mr. Parker, Miss Blind and Mr. Rath. Resolution appropriating monies for current expenses of municipal corporation.
Twenty three dash twenty nine. Mr. Marmy.
I'm making motion to waive the two day reading rule on resolution twenty three dash twenty nine.
Question, do you waive the two day reading rule, Mr. Marmy?
Second.
Second by Mr. Howser. Mr. Marmy.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have uh, some items on here in which we have to expedite because in order to purchase some property that is beneficial to the city and also some other bills that came up that have to be expedited.
Thank you, Mr. Marmy. Janine, please call a roll vote. The two day.
Mr. The Buddhist, Mr. Lang.
Yes.
Mr. Marmy.
Yes.
Mr. Rath.
Yes.
Mr. Klein, Mr. Parker.
Yes.
Miss Blind.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Hattiger, Mr. Hauser.
Yes.
Do you read rules wave, Mr. Marmy?
Thank you, Mr. President. Making motion to adopt for resolution twenty three dash twenty nine.
Second. Done by Mr. Marmy, second by Mr. Howser. Any other discussion on twenty three dash twenty nine? See, now, Janine, please call a roll vote.
Mr. The Buddhist, Mr. Lang.
Yes.
Mr. Marmy.
Yes.
Mr. Rath.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan, Mr. Parker.
Miss Blind. Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Hattiger. Mr. Hauser.
Yes, twenty three dash twenty nine passes seven zero. Next on the first reading, we have twenty three dash thirty.
Resolution number twenty three dash thirty by Mr. Marmy, Mr. Parker, Mr. Rath. Resolution authorizing directing the director of public service of the City of Newark, Ohio to participate in the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Program.
Twenty three dash thirty will be held for two weeks until our next meeting on the seventeenth. And next we have twenty three dash thirty one.
Resolution number twenty three dash thirty one by Mr. Rath, Mr. Marmy, Miss Blind and Mr. Parker. Resolution authorizing the director of public service for the City of Newark, Ohio to enter into memorandum of understanding with Lincoln County Sewell Water Conservation District.
And twenty three dash thirty one will be held for two weeks until our next meeting. And finally, we have twenty three dash thirty two.
Resolution number twenty three dash thirty two by Mr. Rath, Mr. Marmy, Miss Blind and Mr. Parker. A resolution authorizing the director of public service for the City of Newark, Ohio to enter into cooperative agreement with Newark Development Partners and other affected property owners for replacement of a sewer line.
And twenty three dash thirty two will be held for two weeks till our next meeting. And that concludes the legislation round. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, we have our second opportunity for comments from citizens. Again, this is not a debate with council or a question answer period. This is your chance to be heard. If you'd like to speak, raise your hand and we'll have you come up. Perfect. Anyone else like to speak?
Just give us your name and address for the.
Thirty one, thirty five South Porch Street. Well, quickly, just wanted to give you an update in the fire department this evening. I apologize, I didn't have time to prepare today. But first, congratulations to five new New York police officers sworn in this morning. I'm happy to announce that two weeks from tonight or today, the New York Fire Department will also be doing the same thing by swearing in five brand new firefighters into our division. Uh, that will bring our ranks starting to build back up. We have four more candidates that are currently in process. We hope to be able to swear in within the next month. We are also going to be opening up a second round of interviews this month in April, so that's why we can try to fill our ranks entirely. Also wanted to update council and thank them again for the purchase of the medic unit. It goes online in June of this year, so our first ambulance will be available hopefully by the end of twenty twenty four, possibly the early twenty twenty five. With that, it's all due with the Mayor Hall's administration and and the council for understanding the needs of fire department and realizing that for us, the best service citizens is benefiting us to have the equipment at our at our access. So thank you for your time and have a good evening.
Thank you. Ma'am, wanna you?
Do I need to say my name? Do I need to say my name? I'm Bridget Bowdy, two zero seven North Ploton Road. I'm more here to address the mayor. Um, because I know that you're gonna make the ultimate call because you were the boss. And I just want to tell you that I'm here to help. And I would like you to understand that I have been at Cedar Hill for, and I know that none of you honestly care. So I know that this really doesn't affect any of you, but it does affect us and we are citizens of Newark. And it's really not fair because my brother has been buried there for seventeen years and I have mowed, weeded and maintained his grave and all five graves. And now I've lost my uncle and my father passed away two months ago. And I just want you to understand the lack of empathy that I was shown today when I showed up to that office and said, you want me to remove the cross? You know, you guys start with prayer, you call yourself Christians and you know, you, I don't see a whole lot of love around here. And I'm really, it's, I've never been to a meeting, but this is pretty disappointing at the way you guys, the lack of empathy that everyone in this room showed, all these people. Um, those people are hurting and to be truthful, I don't even like to go to the cemetery. It's not where I find my peace. I know that Jesus, I know my dad was with Jesus and I know that's where he is. But those people find their peace there and my dad did too. And he, when my brother died, it was all he had. And that's what he chose to do is to take care of it. And I've been mowing it. I bought him a mower that I can lift myself. And you know, again, I know that this doesn't really affect any of you, but I just want you to take into consideration that there are people that would help. Maybe a volunteer program, anything, you know, we are willing to, there's a group of us that are willing to help and would be more than happy to come to a resolution. But she was not willing to come to any resolution. She didn't, it was going to be her way or no way, you know? There's a border around my dad's grave. It's beautiful. I can guarantee if you ask any maintenance worker, because I spoke to every single one of them, when I said fix factory, they all knew who I was. They knew my dad had been up there and he loved that place. You know, it was his second home. And I just really, I don't know the authority any of you have. I don't know anything about that. But if you just could find in your hearts to, you know, just really think about what's happening up there. I know that it can, that trash blows and I I've never thought that they did a bad job taking care of it. But again, I take care of my own grave. So I just really hope that you guys take that into consideration tonight.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Um, my name is Sabrina Warner and I just want to echo what Bridget said today.
Address.
Uh, I'm sorry, one six one seven Loudon Street, Grandville. Um, I think it's very important for you all to remember that you are elected officials. And I think it's very important for you to remember that when people are coming in and storming in here, it's because there's a problem. And if you don't take that seriously, your position will not be there any longer. Mr. Lang, I know that you lost your mother, so I hope that you've heard everything here tonight and are taking that into consideration. Mayor Hall, I just really want to encourage you to put some pressure on Mr. Rhodes. That Chance is not capable of doing her job. This is not about whether or not we like her. This is about what she wrote out in her interview process. There was another person that was interviewed for the same particular job and he had more qualifications than she did. You have the power and authority to make this change happen immediately. I just sat here tonight and heard all of you push through, all the money that you wanted to push through, every ordinance that you wanted to push through. Please make this a sense of urgency. Mr. Hall, do we have your word that you're gonna make this a sense of urgency?
No, no, you don't ask, don't ask him a question.
Do we have your word that you will make this a sense of urgency to talk to Mr. Hall and talk to Mr. Rose?
Well, I, you can't ask me a question, but I do believe he heard you.
Thank you.
Any city officials? Mr. Marmy. Mister Lewis.
Wanted to take a few minutes to publicly thank the council, current council and previous council in the mayor's administration uh, for the support that was a number of last, number of years. Uh, you know, thirty-eight years ago, I got an appointment letter for the assistant superintendent of wastewater plant, and Bryce Peterson was the, uh, service director. He said that he moved to Newark years before that, and it was one of his best decisions of his life. And I, I think it's same advice, I'm glad I got that letter, so I'm happy to be here. Uh, it's, it's great to have a job that has a purpose and gives you purpose, and I think, uh, what I've been able to do here is, is giving you some purpose. And I think we're proud of some of the things we've got done, not only the downtown, but also treatment plants, and, and I think that's good people following behind me here. I think it's gonna be good. I just wanna thank everybody publicly, and, um, thanks.
Thank you for your job, I'll tell you. Not know, Mister Loomis is retiring in four days.
I, I just wanna say, thank you very much. I, I selfishly was hoping this day would come, and I I'm a senate council for fourteen and a half years, and the others office, you see so much more of how much this man is responsible for and that he has going on. I mean, between his knowledge, his human resources, finances, and you know, think back during the ice storm, director, we never lost water. I mean, funding was working all throughout the city, uh, just an amazing guy. I've been on bond rage calls with him, so impressed. Hope to see you a lot around, and, uh, again, thank you very much. He's a total rock star.
Thank you. And the city officials.
Good evening, Mister President. Bill Spurgeon, Dark Computer Resources, I two, wanna thank Roger for his service. Thirty-eight years ago, you were appointed the assistant superintendent of wastewater department, and thirty-seven years ago, I was hired as an operator in training. It was apparent to me that Roger's a skilled administrator. But equally, or I believe more important, you're just a decent, kind human being. It's always arrow inside of those people, so I wanna thank you for your service, and I wish you all life blessings in this next step of your journey. Thank you, Roger.
Thank you. Anyone else? Law Director Moore.
Thank you. Uh, first of all, Roger, congratulations. Uh, I get too long to work with you, but I appreciate working with you, and you certainly miss whatever you do with the time. Um, certainly a lot to take in here tonight, um, on an issue that came up very quickly. But I, I would want to say that I, I disagree with some of your comments. Um, I didn't care. I think there's several people up here who do care, but this is not nothing for us neither. I mean, I I know.
I know, and I understand, I, I know you're, you're rather, let's hold it.
So, this is not it, not caring, and, and please don't take us sitting up here not commenting back as a lack of empathy. That's just the decorum that, that we subscribe by due to our rules, you know, um. I care about what's happening. I think this is a very workable issue. I don't think there's anybody up here who doesn't think that this is not a workable issue. But I don't want you to think that we don't care just because we don't respond, okay? Um, and with that, I'll pass.
Thank you, Director Moore. Mayor Hall?
Yeah, I can react to that a little bit. We have rules and we have to follow, and I just want people to understand, we can't have back and forth. It's, it's council rules, and it's just even orderly fashion. We, uh, listen intentionally, and I'm serious about that. So, I know, I wouldn't say I stand at the top of the mountain and make all the decisions, and everybody would understand that we have collaborative decisions, which includes your input on this side over there. We have citizens come in all the time, and we listen to everything everyone has to say. And, you know, we do have jobs at the end of the time, things to get done. You know, I, I hate to say we put a four-way stop out here at this intersection, but when everybody stops, no, it's gotta be a red light. So sadly, some things in government and across the city have to be made for those that violated the works. I mean, I'm sorry, some of us have fallen. I'm not just buying what we're doing right now. I'm not making any decisions because we listen. And I appreciate everyone coming in and sharing input. I appreciate, we don't see that side sometimes. I've had family that's had some very great involvement, you know, for since, uh, eight, late eighteen hundreds, and have visited quite a bit. We had a beautiful urn. Don't forget, things get stolen there too. And I wanna be very careful that we're accusing people of things. I, I think I gotta be very careful of that. If you do have a great staff over there, and the guys, you know, be on the end of line for a great year hours, that's tough. And they're trying their best. We've put a lot of work into that summary to kind of bring it up. It, it's a big piece at the end of the day. We're fencing in the front, a lot of things. It won't happen overnight. But we will sit down and have, hey, we know it's made, we sit down and have a lot of conversations. You know, and, and what everybody's comments were, and we'll talk about that, and we'll see what we can reach. It isn't a close the ears, and it, it is, it doesn't work that way around here. That's not how I operate, so understand that, please. We'll have a big discussion on this, and we'll look at how we can try to accommodate, but also get the job done. It's a lot of, lot acres to take care of and maintain. And, you know, while it's easy to say contract it out, you don't realize, we've already done, done that route. And the cost is so high, it's absurd. So you have to, and we, we're always looking at ways to improve government, understanding we're spending taxpayers' dollars. And we are the custodian of those dollars, and though there's also a reason we spend, you know, Newark's a one point seven five percent income tax. So, that's pretty low, almost two and a half percent, even two. It's, we do what we can with what we have, and we're unable to raise that rate unless the citizens are gonna do that. So we have to be efficient, or we should be anyways. That's what government should be. We're always working efficiency. If contracting out was cheaper, we'd do it in a second, but it isn't. It's too many acres, so, but that doesn't mean we won't constantly try to do things efficiently and work through it. So the process will always be there. Uh, we will talk about it. What we said tonight will happen. Uh, Roger, thank you. It's been a pleasure. I would say, uh, follow auditor, uh, Bob, uh, we did look for this day. I mean, we tried to talk him out of it, but you know, it wasn't that easy, so, but, uh, we do appreciate it. When you turn that faucet on, that water comes out. I say, that seems easy to most residents. It's an extreme amount of work. And he's done a wonderful job running a wonderful apartments. It, it's pretty, pretty important around here. Have good, fresh, safe drinking water and have the disposal of wastewater the right way. And, uh, they, it's been a pleasure working with Roger and his team. Uh, you know, he's got some big shoes to build, but I think we're headed in good directions for that. Uh, you know, it's nice to rest easy at night. They're doing the best they can and doing the right things, still, water and wastewater and swimwater department. So Roger, thanks again. We wish you the best. Uh, answer the phone once we're on, we might, might give you a call.
Thank you, Mayor. Mister Lee?
Yeah, thank you, Mister President. Um, tonight's been one of the harder meetings that I've, I've had to sit through on council. And, uh, as Sabrina mentioned, my, my mom was lost just a little, little over a year ago. So we've, um, you know, we've spent a lot of time at, at her grave. She doesn't have a tomb yet, or a stone yet. We put little remembrance systems there, um, for her, so um, getting the news about how this was, how this was being handled and how people were feeling, it, it was very close to home for me. Um, I think running cemetery is a big challenge, and, um, you know, we have to make sure that we're, uh, making decisions with, you know, sensitivity, flexibility, kindness when it comes to, uh, the way we're running a cemetery, and, you know, I, I'm just glad that Chance and, and Dave are here tonight to hear. I think ultimately, it's up to them to figure out how they're gonna do this in a way that, that makes people feel cared for, um, while they're grieving their loved ones. And, um, you know, I'm hopeful that this was the start of, of improved communications with, with people, because I think at the end of this, it, it is probably communications failure more than anything else, and, and hopefully, we can all learn from it, improve from it, and, um, to be more kind and graceful to folks going forward, so. Uh, with that, um, and congratulations to Roger on your time as well. Very, very pleasurable working with you the last, last few years, and wish you all the best. Without us.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Mister Marty?
Thank you, Mister President. Need to call a finance committee meeting for April the seventeenth. Few comments, uh, this evening. The, the first one, uh, Mrs. Fowdy, we do care. Uh, my loved ones are out there. My mother and my father are there. Um, I'm the one that takes care of their grave. I'm the one that plants the flowers, replaces it with the artificial back and forth. Um, I, I've been doing that for years. My dad, my father died at the age of fifty-seven at a very young age. Um, and I helped my mother until she passed away. My grandparents are buried there. Uh, I, I frequent Cedar Hill a lot, and I need that. And, uh, the folks that were here this evening were heard. Um, I also know that one of my biggest complaints has been when April comes around, they don't empty the trash quick enough out there, because all those artificial flowers have been in those baskets, and they're just, they're, they're there, and people just throw things away. And then, when the, uh, the change of seasons, when the planted flowers, people just trash and they put it there. I always take mine with me. And so I, I, I've known the rules for years, and I've abided by them. Um, I'm not saying that, you know, rules can't change. That's not what I'm saying. Um, uh, what I'm saying is that there was a purpose for those rules, and I've the signs have been there for years and years, and, you know, my loved ones, I care about them. I, I, I clean the tombstone. I'm the one that's out there, and I, I'll have a beer with my dad, and I'll sit there and I'll pour some on the grave site, and I'll drink them with them. Um, and the hardest, the hardest day of my life was when I had to prepare put a cigar out there, because my son was born, and he never got to become a son. And so it is a part of my life, and it's, it's a part of my, it is my family. It's part of my family right now. So hearing everything that was said this evening, I feel it. I believe it, and I know that, um, the folks that make the decisions, and they're gonna do what's best, and I have faith in them, and, um, you know, one thing about this administration, they always listen. They always listen. Uh, we are always trying, the, the comment about, uh, contracting out, this mayor indicated. Oh, we've looked into that for years, and we, it isn't like we give up on it either. We'll revisit it every few years. So we do hear those things when we look for, for good solutions. Um, one comment on some of Mister Blaney's comments. He talked about, you know, that you have, and, and I call it the hammer and the purse of the reward. Um, he talks about teamwork. And I don't think that's the third option, because you can have teamwork with the hammer approach, and you can have teamwork with the purse approach or the reward approach. Um, what it really takes, what really drives it, is purpose, and that's what Roger Loomis has. He had purpose. That's what our city workers have, is purpose. That's what Joe Paul has in our property maintenance, is purpose. There's a purpose for what we do, and it's for the betterment of the city. It's the betterment of, of the citizens. And I, I think that that is what really, you, you have to, it, it comes from the heart. And you have to have it from the heart. Um, and if you ever get a chance, one of my, my most favorite books, Lead for God's Sake, it's about a basketball team. And it's really not about a basketball team. It's about that purpose, that heart. And, um, if, if we could all just follow Roger Loomis's footsteps and have that purpose and do what he has done, then Newark would be even a better place. And I think that we're, we're improving upon it, and we are, uh, getting better. And, um, I have to cut this off, and we also need to invoke rule eleven, so we do have to get to some business sales and legislation.
Yes, we're gonna go back to rule, we're gonna use rule eleven as you, if you need to, we're gonna start with twenty-three dash oh nine.
Order number twenty-three dash zero nine by Mister Rath, Mister Helfer, in order to consent to the annexation of certain territory generally described as being approximately zero point eight seven one acres, more or less located in Newark Township to the city of Newark, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
For the reading of twenty-three dash oh nine, what is your wish?
Mister President.
Mister Marty?
Making motion to adopt, um, ordinance twenty-three dash oh nine.
Motion by Mister Marty.
Second.
Second by Mister Ralph. Now, if we pass twenty-three oh nine, then twenty-three dash ten is the one, um, objecting to it, so we will just scratch it. Okay? Is there any discussion on point three dash oh nine? Janine, please call the roll vote.
Mister Labuda, Mister Lane.
Yes.
Mister Marty.
Yes.
Mister Ralph.
Yes.
Mister Ryan, Mister Parker, Miss Blind.
Yes.
Mister Harris.
Yes.
Miss Pottinger, Mister Hauser.
Yes.
Twenty-three dash oh nine passes seven zero.
Mister President.
Mister Ralph.
Port of order.
Yes.
Uh, I believe that twenty-three ten still needs to be read.
I'm sorry, say it again.
I believe twenty-three dash ten still needs to be read. It does, it could die for lack of motion.
Okay.
But I think it still needs to be read. Am I correct?
I, I don't know. We've done both ways, I think, but we'll go ahead and read it. This January twenty-three dash. Thank you, Mister Ralph.
Order number twenty-three dash ten by Mister Rath, Mister Barker, Mister Marty, Miss Blind. In order to subjecting the annexation of certain territory generally described as being zero point eight seven one acres, more or less located in Newark Township to the city of Newark, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
For the reading of twenty-three dash ten, is there a motion to adopt? Same then that dies for lack of emotion. So we want to twenty-three dash thirty-five.
Resolution number twenty-three dash thirty-five by Mister Rath, Mister Barker, Mister Marty, and Miss Blind. Resolution adopting a statement indicating what services, if any, the city of Newark, Ohio will provide for approximately zero point eight seven one acres, more or less located in Newark Township, a territory proposed for expedited to annexation and declaring an emergency.
For the reading of twenty-three dash thirty-five, any wish?
Mister President.
Mister Marty?
Making motion to adopt resolution twenty-three dash thirty-five.
Second by Mister Marty, second by Mister Ralph. Is there any discussion on twenty-three dash thirty-five? See now, Janine, please call the roll vote.
Mister Labuda, Mister Lane.
Yes.
Mister Marty.
Yes.
Mister Ralph.
Yes.
Mister Ryan, Mister Parker, Miss Blind.
Yes.
Mister Harris.
Yes.
Miss Pottinger, Mister Hauser.
Yes.
Twenty-three dash thirty-five passes seven zero, and finally, on this annexation, we have twenty-three dash thirty-six.
Resolution number twenty-three dash thirty-six by Mister Rath, Mister Barker, Mister Marty, Miss Blind. Resolution regarding a buffer zone for the annexation of approximately zero point eight seven one acres, more or less located in Newark Township and declaring an emergency.
For the reading of twenty-three dash thirty-six, what is your wish?
Mister President, Mister Marty, making motion to adopt resolution twenty-three dash thirty-six.
Motion by Mister Marty, second by Mister Ralph. Any other discussion on twenty-three dash thirty-six? Janine, please call the roll vote.
Mister Labuda, Mister Lane.
Yes.
Mister Marty.
Yes.
Mister Ralph.
Yes.
Miss Blind, Mister Parker, Miss White, yes, Harris.
Yes.
Miss Pottinger, Mister Hauser.
Yes.
Reason we add a usual eleven on these two is because the, uh, this has to go back to the county commissioners in a certain period of time.
Yeah.
So, in a quick period of time. Next, we have twenty-three dash eleven.
Order number twenty-three dash eleven by Mister Rath, Mister Barker, Mister Marty, and Miss Blind. In order to consenting to the annexation of certain territory generally described as being approximately two point zero three five acres, more or less located in Newark Township to the city of Newark, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
For the reading of twenty-three dash eleven, what is your wish?
Mister President, Mister Marty, making motion to adopt ordinance twenty-three dash eleven.
Motion by Mister Marty, second by Mister Ralph. During the discussion on twenty-three dash eleven. See now, Janine, please call the roll vote.
Mister Labuda, Mister Lane.
Yes.
Mister Marty.
Yes.
Mister Ralph.
Yes.
Mister Ryan, Mister Parker, Miss Blind.
Yes.
Mister Harris.
Yes.
Mister Pottinger, Mister Hauser.
Yes.
Twenty-three dash eleven passes seven zero. Next, we have twenty-three dash twelve, which is the, uh, objecting to annexation. So, Janine, would you read point three dash twelve?
Order number twenty-three dash twelve by Mister Rath, Mister Parker, Mister Marty, Miss Blind. In order to subjecting to the annexation of certain territory, territory generally described as being two point zero three three five acres, more or less located in Newark Township to the city of Newark, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Any motion to adopt? Seeing then that dies for lack of emotion. Next, we have twenty-three dash thirty-seven.
Resolution number twenty-three dash thirty-seven by Mister Rath, Mister Barker, Mister Marty, and Miss Blind. Resolution adopting a statement indicating what services, if any, the city of Newark, Ohio will provide for approximately two point zero three five acres, more or less located in Newark Township, a territory proposed for expedited to annexation and declaring an emergency.
For the reading of twenty-three dash thirty-seven, what is your wish?
Mister President, Mister Marty, making motion to adopt resolution twenty-three dash thirty-seven.
Second by Mister Marty, second by Mister Ralph. Any other discussion on twenty-three dash thirty-seven? See now, Janine, please call the roll vote.
Mister Labuda, Mister Lane.
Yes.
Mister Marty.
Yes.
Mister Ralph.
Yes.
Mister Ryan, Mister Parker, Miss White.
Yes.
Mister Harris.
Yes.
Miss Pottinger, Mister Hauser.
Yes.
And one more to finish this annexation, twenty-three dash thirty-eight.
Resolution number twenty-three dash thirty-eight by Mister Rath, Mister Barker, Mister Marty, and Miss Blind. A resolution regarding a buffer zone for the annexation of approximately two point zero three five acres, more or less located in Newark Township and declaring an emergency.
For the reading of twenty-three dash thirty-eight, what is your wish?
Mister President, Mister Marty, making motion to adopt resolution twenty-three dash thirty-eight.
Motion by Mister Marty.
Third.
Second by Mister Ralph. Yeah, almost missed that one. Any discussion on twenty-three dash thirty-eight? See now, Janine, please call the roll vote.
Mister Labuda, Mister Lane.
Yes.
Mister Marty.
Yes.
Mister Ralph.
Yes.
Mister Ryan, Mister Parker, Miss Blind.
Yes.
Mister Harris.
Yes.
Miss Pottinger, Mister, Mister Hauser.
Yes.
And twenty-three dash thirty-eight passes seven zero, and that could close those two annexations. And with that, I'll pass. Thank you, Mister Marty. Mister Ralph.
Thank you. Call service committee meeting for the seventeenth. Uh, Roger, congratulations. I know the mayor said he was going to call you. Um, is there a place to hire kayak for a home? I didn't think so. Congratulations. Um, you'll, you'll be sorely missed. Huge to be hard to fill, but it's nice to know that you believe in not your entire team. I think you were probably prepared that well enough with what we're up to, good hands. We appreciate you for that as well. Um, five new police officers, that's awesome here. Um, very glad to hear that. Five new firefighters coming next week. Uh, community is awesome. Great, glad to hear all of that. Um, push that as well to say, well said. But no, uh, it's funny that Mr. Marmy brought up. Can blame his comments. Um, you call it the anger of the purse. I've always heard of the age old proverb of the carrot and the stick, but how do you know to give people? But uh, I thought that was interesting. And with that, I'll pass.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Rath, Mr. Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Roger, congratulations again. I, we can't say enough for what you've done for the city in your, in your time. I mean. Just from when I got on council four years ago, learning the water system was, was uh, definitely eye opening. You helped every step of the way. Thank you. Really appreciate that. Um, you know, uh, I, I have a hard time hearing that we don't care. Um, Councilman Houser and I this morning spent about two hours at Cedar Hill. Uh, talking to different residents uh, throughout that time period, some that were here tonight, some that weren't. Um. You know, when it comes that there's nothing legislatively that we can alter. There's no area in our classified ordinance. But we have the complete, I have the complete trust in Director Rhodes, Superintendent Pathnick, the mayor, that they're going to make the, the right decision. They do listen and we have given our input. Um, and we've heard all. Everybody, Bridget, we talked a couple of times this morning and um, you know, my father's in Cedar Hill at the Mauleian. Um, and so I'm, I'm familiar as well as Mr. Marmy said with our procedure on that. Um, and it sounds like to me a lot of people weren't. And so as, as Councilman Lang said, there was, you know, could be some communication issues. I think at the end of the day, the biggest thing is that we do care. We want public input. You know, I spent half my morning with the public as well as my afternoon at work on the phone. Uh, with different city officials, with my fellow council members and different members of the public. And so. Here's what I always say, we're always going to listen and we're always going to trust our administration. Uh, because they trust us. And if there's a disagreement, we all work it out. And um, I, I think this is something that came on very, very quick. Um, I remember Saturday talking to Councilman Harris going, what happened? Where's this coming from? Uh, we really didn't know. So. The biggest thing that I want people to take away, and I, you know, wish other people would hear this, that we're here is that we, we're, we're listening. We do care. We all in some capacity have loved ones in that same cemetery. And we're going to work side by side with the administration through this, in this thirty day time period to come to the best solution. Uh, and with that, I want to say congratulations to the new, our new five officers. Um, I left Cedar Hill with Councilman Houser and went to that uh, ceremony. And I'm happy to hear that we have five new firefighters coming on board with four kind of in, in the up and coming position. Um. Things are, things are, are turning in the right direction in both those departments. Today made it so our, our police department was fully staffed. For now, until there's a retirement at some point, which there always is. Um, and with that, I pass.
Thank you, Mr. Parker, Ms. Blind.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I just, I want to congratulate Mr. Loomis. Thank you. I haven't known you long, but excellent. Excellence. Uh, everything you do and have done has been done with excellence. And we are all grateful for that. And I'd like to thank property maintenance. They're still here, but. They do incredible work. They're often a first line of defense and, and I appreciate them greatly regardless of uh, Mr. Blaney's comments. If the property is maintained, then there's not an issue. So we have to inspect our expectations to some extent. And so. I'd like to thank uh, the Boy Scouts from troop four. Uh, they were Eagle Scout candidates that for the past three Saturday mornings, we've been out and working and taking care of some properties that needed. Uh, some assistance. And so I'm grateful for their heart and their spirit. It's been a great time just being with their families and uh, and listening to their bowls. They have some really great news in this community and uh, it's, it was just a really good opportunity just to listen. And um, I would like to thank Shelby for coming tonight and leading the pledge. She'll be returning to council in a couple of weeks uh, with uh, with a request. She's already talked to Ms. Pathnick about it and it's a good thing. So as far as the cemetery things, of course, we do care. Again, to echo Mr. Barker and our law director, this came fast. This isn't something that I, I don't think a lot of us have expertise in. And so I know my phone rang for hours over the weekend and if it, if it wasn't calls, it was texts. And if it wasn't text, it was emails back. Logically, I still have emails that I have to get to tonight. And just listening and you know, I was gratefully get your phone call. And you know, it was an opportunity for me to learn more. We're always learning. You know, the thing with people is that none of us are perfect. We're all tend to be a little bit messy in some category or another. But it's when we work together. That we do find the others. We do find those moments. And so I, thank you. It wasn't our time to talk tonight. It was your time. This is your city council. So this is why we're here. And I'm so glad you guys came tonight. I'd like to welcome Mr. Reavely, who's considering politics. And um, so grateful you came to me. That's.
Thank you, Ms. Blind, Ms. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I just echo what everyone says about we do care. I, I believe. Most of us here have lost parents, so we get it, we understand it. Um, so it doesn't work out. Uh, Shelby, I think you're the first person that's ever set the pledge and stayed for a whole meeting. Congratulations.
Everything over you.
Yeah. Roger, good luck to you. And uh, wish you well. And yesterday, uh, we had a birthday up here and it was Janine. I think she. Yesterday, so. And with that, I'll pass.
But Mr. Harris and Mr. Houser.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know Roger, when I ran into you at the RV and boat show in Columbus, I feel like that was when I knew you were really taking the retirement seriously. So I'm just thankful for all your, your service. Obviously, I haven't gotten to work with you a whole lot of, a little bit of bonus for a year, but uh, thank you for all your service. Um, to the city. I know all the residents and everybody here in the city appreciates them, so thank you. Um, I know all the council members have already uh, expressed this, but uh, we certainly care. Uh, Councilman Barker uh, now already mentioned this, but you know, the woman I got a message from a resident asking uh, maybe president of the cemetery uh, the next morning. Um, take that seriously. People, people care uh, about what our, our, how we're going to listen to, and I understand that. Um, so that was, that was an automatic yes. A hundred percent will be done. So we spent a few hours down there listening to concerns because that's what we're here to do. We're here to listen to concerns. So you know, I certainly appreciate everybody coming out. Um, you know, there, there were a lot of personal comments made about Superintendent Pathnick and this doesn't need to be a personal issue. Um, I think that uh, they heard all the comments here tonight. Uh, any efforts that she has made has been. Obviously, a disagreement about that, but it's been her best effort to try and improve the cemetery for what her, she's trying to accomplish there. So um, I appreciate her effort in that and I'm sure that uh, her and Director Rhodes will uh, have listened to the comments here. And uh, will uh, you know, figure out what uh, what they can do to, to meet with uh, more in line with some of the desires of those. So um, I just want to thank um, Deputy Chief Vermont for the update uh, and the new firefighters um, being hired. And also got to attend um, this where again for police officers. That was my first time doing that. It was exciting to see uh, new members get out of the force. Um, and uh, that I'll pass.
Yeah, the cemetery is, was such an issue, that's for sure. Uh, I'm sure the supervisor, Pathnick, Director Rhodes and the mayor will, will come up with something. It may not be something everybody's happy with, but I'm sure there'll be some sort of a compromise that hopefully most everyone can live with. Uh, and that you'll find reasonable. Uh. I need to apologize to the young lady I yelled at tonight. I'm usually pretty calm and don't yell at anybody, but after I tried to talk to her about four times, I finally just yelled. And I apologize for that because that, that wasn't, that wasn't kosher. Uh, and Roger, I'm like, what did he buy at the boat ship?
I can't confirm a purchase. I didn't follow him around a little.
Uh, what did you buy at the boat ship? Or yeah. Roger's done a great job. He's leaving the, giving the water department great hands because he has done a great job having folks follow him and know what to do. So Roger, good luck. I appreciate it. He's done a great job. It's been nice knowing him. So I'm sure we'll run each other again soon. And with that, so. Action on Mr. Harris, second by Mr. Barker, all the favorite single.